Getting cold, you gotta get moving. Refresh, cool. Appreciate. Good? Smithville Board of Alderman Meeting is now called to order. Please stand and join me for the pledge. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Alderman Hartman.
Mayor, good evening, Mary. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If we're approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is the Parks and Rec Committee. Report. Alderman Hartman, you want to take this one?
Yeah, sure, Will Mayor. Thank you. So, we had the opportunity to look at some plans specific to, well, let me back up. First of all, we were introduced to Alex. Who's there. She's took over the new role. Brittany Probst, yes, thank you, Cynthia. So then we dove into looking at some plans for Emmer Bridge Park. And I believe we had three submissions and we were able to talk through those. I think that we provided some feedback from a Parks Board and they're going to make some changes. And I believe it eventually will be presented to us as the Alderman. Trying to think if I'm missing anything else.
We did Riverwalk discussion.
Discussion, yes. So I believe Cynthia will be talking about that in her administrative report this evening about the Mark funds.
The direction from the Parks Board was to move forward with the Riverwalk and move out the timeline on sports courts. Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Next city administrator report, Ms. Wagner, do you have anything to add?
I do, just a few things. As we've noted several times, new Assistant City Administrator is Gina Pate. And she is here, as is Alex Thralkel- Thralkeld. Got it, yeah. As we've noted, Alex is our Recreation Coordinator. The city administrators' report that was posted with the agenda has a number of staffing changes. We've hired a number of people and we have a few folks leaving, but continue recruitment in several areas. So that information is in the in the report. As noted in the work session earlier, and as Alderman Hartman and the mayor alluded to, we have information from Mark, as I noted, the application for the four projects for Mark funding were reviewed by various committees where those make sense. The projects have made it through the review processes in those committees. The Riverwalk project is recommended for funding with about nine hundred thousand dollars in Mark grant funding. The city would need to find a million dollars in funding. As we noted at the last meeting and as the Parks and Recreation Committee reviewed, there's about six hundred thousand dollars in funding in twenty twenty five, I believe, six for sports courts. We also have some funding in this Parks and Recreation and Stormwater Sales Tax for Stormwater Needs in that timeframe. We also are looking at the staff level of some identification of some projects that could be pushed or moved around to be able to take advantage of that nine hundred thousand dollars in federal funding. It's staff's recommendation and as the mayor outlined, it is the recommendation of Parks and Recreation Committee to reallocate and reprioritize them of those projects so that we can take on those federal funds for a big project for the community. Ron, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just a question. When do the funds have to be spent? Is there a limit when they need to be spent by?
There is, and I do believe, is it by twenty twenty seven? They have to be allocated by twenty six, and usually that comes with a timeline, twenty seven, twenty eight. There's some time after that, so.
Okay, thank you.
So that's the Riverwalk piece. Then we also, in a separate committee, this actually, in that same committee, funding for Second Creek Sidewalk was included. We do have funds in the CIP. The other projects that are recommended for funding through Mark do have allocated funding in the CIP at this point in time. And we just want to bring forward to the board that information so that you know that we're recommended for about six hundred thousand dollars in Mark funding for the Second Creek Sidewalk. The budget as it exists, the CIP, which outlines projects for the future, includes funds for the Second Creek Project and for the Bridge Street Roundabout. The Bridge Street Roundabout funding is through a separate committee. They meet again next week. Next Tuesday, to make final recommendations to the Mark Board for adoption of those funding recommendations. We want to be able to email them, email Mark tomorrow saying that the Bridge Street Roundabout funded at seven hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in federal money is something that we would be able to provide the local funding for. We do have funds available in that project outline. Staff just wants to make sure there are no concerns at the board level. So that brings us with nine hundred, seven eighty-four and six hundred thousand dollars in grants. About two point five million, almost two point five million dollars in funds for some pretty significant projects in the community. Any concerns the board has? We have, as we said, the Bridge Street Roundabout and Second Creek Sidewalks have already been identified in the CIP. Nothing is through the funds for the twenty twenty-three budget. So as it exists, it is fine. It would be reprioritizing some of the projects in the out years. And the funding that would predominantly need to be reallocated would be that million dollars for the Riverwalk. Recommended use through Parks and Recreation Sales Tax and then some ancillary funds from other areas. If the board concurs, we will send that email tomorrow that we agree with those recommendations and would work to find, to provide the local funding for those match, for those grants.
Yeah, and I mean, that's a priority project in the Transportation Master Plan, and that's basically why we submitted the grant application. So spent money on those plans to follow those plans.
And that's what these sales taxes are for, for us to spend this money.
Those big projects. And I will note also, the Riverwalk, that's a big project. We did not anticipate being able to find funding for that for a while. But because of the linkage that that provides from the Main Street Trail and then the Second Creek Trail, that creates the Mark. All of these projects are based on a scoring system, and our Riverwalk project scored very highly, and staff believe that is because linking the Second Creek Sidewalk and the Riverwalk makes a connection once you connect to the Main Street Trail from Platte County to Smithville Lake and the Smithville Lake Trails. That's a big piece of the Mark Metro Green planning process, and that's a high priority for the region. So we're excited to be able to see that come to fruition.
Mayor, I just wanted to point out that prior to your first term, we had never applied for Mark funding ever, correct?
I don't think that we had a plan. I don't know that we did much, but no, yeah. And now we're three point four million all in total between the five projects.
Absolutely. No, this is wonderful news and, yeah.
So we will tomorrow send that email that the city is on board with those recommendations. Great, thank you all. I will also, it was not included in here, but we received word after posting of the agenda. We have received word from Congressman Graves' office also that our applications for a number of utility projects are moving through the WERDA allocation process. Now this takes some time through the budget allocation and appropriations and all of the steps at the federal level. We did not, all of the projects, with the exception of the bar screen that we've talked about a number of times, all of the projects included in our request for federal funding, and we had provided that information to the board before, are currently fully funded in our combined water and wastewater systems fund. If the funding continues to move through the process and approved, that is, that's revenue we were not anticipating. So that helps us in rates over the longer term, being able to push back the timing for debt issuances required. It helps us, it eases that, those funding requirements on that fund. So that's also good information. Good news, we probably won't have final word until well after the beginning of next calendar year.
April, the release.
Yeah, but it's, we continue on track.
Yeah, we submitted to both Graves and Holly's office, and the bills have passed both the House and the Senate with different wording, but none of the municipal projects have been pulled. So. None of them have been pulled out of the bills.
Removed out of the.
So for that, so the federal government has, Ward has been around for years. It's mostly been for big federal infrastructure projects. They're now taking the approach of, let's get money to the municipalities because that's going to impact people closer to home. So that's, they've changed that direction. It's been a shift for them. So this is really the first time they've taken municipal projects on, and we're in there. There's another small town just north of here that's in there. But it's a big deal. It's seventy-five percent funding. So.
Significant.
Saves us a lot on debt issuance and other things, so.
I think that answers my question. Was, is this something that happens yearly or?
It, no, this is the first time ever for municipal projects. And myself, Alderman Hartman, others, a former Alderman who worked for Graves' office. It's, it's nice to be able to get that stuff submitted, and they've worked, had good working relationships with staff to come to them and say, what are the projects? Here's the application. They've really been, they made that decision, and now they've been working with the municipalities to make sure they get it. So I think Dearborn's the other one that's, they're mostly septic and they're going to look again at a sewer plant as well, so. It's a really big deal because that's, it's a lot of money. If you think about what we've had in the sewer master plan for Forest Oaks. And one hundred forty-fourth.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's, it's.
We've made out in the last six months.
It's not, now, most of that is already, but you know, we anticipate pretty significant repair expenses. It is not an insignificant thing to run a utility operation. But to have that, I don't want to use the term gravy, but it is, it is nice to have that to assist us.
And the same thing with the transportation dollars, like Alderman Hartman said, Mark's just celebrated fifty years. It is the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the entire metro. We don't get direct federal dollars. We're not a big enough city. And to do that, we do that as a group of nine counties, both Missouri and Kansas, and we just weren't at the table. And not at the table, they don't talk about you. So they're not just going to magically give you money.
And as Alderman Hartman said, that mayor has served on a number of committees there. We've also Chuck Souls has been at that table throughout these processes, and Chuck and Gina and Myra have been key in putting those applications together, so.
Chuck and Gina both in there, and people at Mark know him, and I'll be happy to vote on that one when the board meeting comes up there.
Absolutely. One other item I didn't have in the report, did want to call your all's attention to, a little bit of happy news, good news. You all following on the tails of information this morning, you all are aware that the police officer was involved, hit in a parked car assisting a vehicle being towed away. Our employee is doing fine. He was released, went to the hospital for observation and has been released. But last night was Halloween, and we had a situation where we had a minor in protective custody. A very small young girl. A number of police officers' hearts were kind of touched because when we first came in contact with her, she was in the car with a parent and was talking about going trick or treating. Our officers helped get her into her costume and got her back to the station, brought cars into the parking lot, and basically created a private trunk or treat for this three-year-old little girl whose Halloween otherwise would have been ruined. So we had Belle, a princess, at City Hall's Police Station last night. So thanks go out to Officers Simonton, Mathis, Silkner, Burns, Redwood, and Sergeants Gerhart and Johnson.
Thank you. I sworn another one yesterday, right, Chief? Two days ago, yeah. We got, when's the academy graduation? Two weeks? Two weeks from this coming Thursday, Kansas City. Let's keep your eye out. We have more joining. All right, anything else before we move on? Any questions for Ms. Wagner? All right. Next item on the agenda is number six. Alderman Hartman.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for bill number twenty-nine sixty-four dash twenty-two, destruction records, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Questions, Mayor?
Sure.
For discussion, I guess. Go ahead and discuss it.
Yeah, if you have questions, go ahead.
Yeah, so I understand the city destruction records and how that they're lined up. A question that I have right now is on the police destruction records. They haven't seen them, but when you put prior to two thousand nineteen, it, when I read that, it just screams to me that we have not destroyed any records forever. Besides two years ago. That's just what the way of wording is, and it also talks about twenty twenty, twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen. I'm sure there's dates associated with retention. I just haven't seen those on the, on the department, on the Police Department side. I just thought that the, the bill as written is confusing and maybe misleading. So the question is, can I get some clarification on the record retention, destruction of records for the Police Department?
So, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, these are records prior to two thousand nineteen. Basically, we must keep our records up to a certain date, and these records are for those we're keeping on hand, in possession, records from two thousand nineteen forward. So they're records that we have on hand, most of them probably from two thousand nineteen. Generally, we bring this ordinance forward on an annual basis. So last year, we would have requested destruction of records two thousand eighteen and prior. Most of our records, Chief, ninety-nine percent of them will be from two thousand nineteen. We may have some outstanding records that were used in a case that might have been wrapped up, or?
None of these are related to criminal cases or any kind of investigation. They are officers' daily log sheets, which by state guidelines are required to be kept for two years. There are some other housekeeping-type documents, related traffic stops that are required to be kept a year, which a lot of, all those processes in the last couple of years have been transferred from paper to they're now all electronic, so it's kind of a housekeeping procedure there. And then some of the court documents that are mentioned is this is kind of cleaning up from when we transferred court over to the Circuit Court at Clay County, inside the courthouse there. And as we go through our storage room out here in the parking lot, we come across things like these, and when we realize we've got enough to make it worthwhile to come forward, that's when we put it together and bring it forward and ask for destruction. Approach I've taken in the past, if I've got a box or two, it doesn't seem worthwhile to call the destruction company, bring them in for that. Because it's just, fiscally, it doesn't make any sense. So we wait till we've got a decent amount to make it worth their while to come out.
So if, like you said, Cynthia, that this happens every year, right, for the city? So next year at this time, will we be doing the same thing with the Police Department? I guess my question, I just want to see if there's. So next year, it should just be like one year change, right? Instead of a year. Do you see what I'm saying? It's saying pre, pre two thousand nineteen, let's say, well, two thousand, anything before two thousand eighteen should have already been destroyed, right? It should have, do you see what I'm saying? It's almost a catch. I just, this wording is just really weird to me. I think I probably want to look at the, at the at the statute on it. It's just really, am I, am I just talking to a wall here? Does anybody understand what I'm saying?
No, I understand what you're saying. I just, I just don't. I mean, this year, it's pre two thousand nineteen, next year will be pre two thousand twenty. I mean, it's just, I think it's just the way the language is. I mean, I don't, I mean, I understand, I understand your concern and you, but I just don't.
I mean, coming forward, we can, we can give you a laundry list if you'd like.
No, it, that piece doesn't matter. I just wonder if, if there's a statute that we're following or not following, or is it just whenever we get enough boxes together? What is it?
No, we're following a statute based on that timeline, and these are, so we are now statutorily able to destroy any records prior to two thousand nineteen.
And the statute allows us to, the statute doesn't mandate it at that time.
Right.
So there is some discretion in there to allow for the city to, like I said, not, not destroy a small handful of boxes and waste money for, for shredding company to come out for fifteen minutes worth of work.
Right.
So.
Well, what would you recommend the language look like?
Well, I mean, the way the verbiage is in this, for the city, for the financial records, it's a year, they're destroying a year's worth of records, right? I mean, that's the way it is. I think that if we're going to do, if every year we're going to have a shredding company for those records, and I think every, we should have the same thing with the Police Department records at the same time.
I think, and the Police, all the records, maybe we talk about anything prior to those dates, which then allows us, if there are records that we did keep for instance, let's say, Chief, there was an investigation that was now thirty years old, and it's meant everything, but we've had it. That's one item that we might get rid of. This is just, it's a little bit, as you said, it's a little bit of a catch-all to allow us, in case there is anything that has reached the point where it is able to be destroyed, but for whatever purpose has been kept and has not yet been destroyed. Chief, is that fair?
That's fair. And also, a thing that plays into this, the quality has been staffing levels.
Yeah.
The last few years, our staffing levels have been less than ideal. That's probably a fair statement.
Tony got a new office. He might have found a notebook when he was moving his desk.
Yeah.
I mean.
You know, having the time and the people to go through those and verify and check against the statutes and the requirements hasn't always been there.
And that's, and that's something that I wanted to make sure we try to cover, right? If the requirement, we can't do it for staffing levels, I get it, right? But let's try to.
And remember, it's not, as Chief mentioned, it's not a requirement. We are allowed to destroy those. The state statute allows that destruction. It does not require the destruction. So I think we want to make sure that there's that difference, too.
I, that's really a good difference, I think, and I just suggest going forward that if we do this like we do on an annual basis, that police records and the other records that we are going to have to destroy, that we do it at one time, right? I'm just, I think that would be beneficial to make sure that every year at this time, we're going to do this for different department heads.
And this is, so this is something that normally comes up in November. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
New budget year.
Okay, thank you. I was just a little confused. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you for getting under her mic. Any other questions? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman, six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance authorizing the destruction of certain records.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number seven. Alderman Hartman.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for bill number twenty-nine sixty-five dash twenty-two, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget amendment number one, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol. Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three operating budget to add fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars to the expenditure budget.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number eight. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve Resolution eleven forty-four, change order number five, raw water pump station gate.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, make a second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I have a discussion on this item. When I read through this, it said the amount seventy-seven forty-two for the new double gate was approved. It also said in there that there's a, in this force. This might have forced, there's still eight hundred, if I remember right, eight hundred something dollars left in that force budget. So I guess the question is, if the, this is approved, if that eight hundred dollars is utilized before the installation of the new the equipment, the parts we're waiting for, do we go, is it something presented back to the board to find money, I guess, from somewhere else after that?
This is identified to be used as part of that force account, and then the rest will be used from, from the utility fund budget.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor approving Resolution eleven forty-four, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number nine. Alderman Hartman.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution eleven forty-five, replacing the backwash pump.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor approving Resolution eleven forty-five, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number ten, Resolution eleven forty-six. Can I get a motion to approve? Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve Resolution eleven forty-six, acknowledging the emergency purchase.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Okay. I'm glad the air conditioner is working today. Thanks for getting it fixed. Be hot in here for him. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor approving Resolution eleven forty-six, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. I have a few public comment cards. Any more? No? When you come out, make sure you speak into the mic so people online can hear you. Please state your name for the, name, address for the record. You have three minutes to speak. First on the, on the list is Mr. Gresham.
James Gresham, one eleven James Street. I know it's not on the agenda, but we need to look at the fencing ordinance. We own GT tow. Been broke into twice in the last week and a half, lost about forty thousand dollars. Broke into some cars that ended up having guns in them. So we got guns out on the street. I'm looking to have my fence, my chain link fence, and then have an electric fence inside of. Like what the Kent City Auto Auction's got, KCI Auto Auction, Hooker's Tow, and Independence has it. Jay Southlandso has it in Harrisonville, and we have it in our lot in Lathrop. I think that your ordinance is thirty years old. I'm zoned industrial. I'm not residential. I'm zoned industrial up there. I mean, that, or I got to look at moving out of the city. I got to be able to protect, I mean, if I had one of your cars in there and somebody broke into it, you're going to talk to different people. It's ruining my reputation. Because I can't prevent people from coming in. I've got cameras, and, I mean, basically, they stay on the backside. Police Department tried to help me Friday night. We set up a sting, and I didn't show up. Got to be able to protect our property, or your property. I mean, I'm not liable on insurance, you know what I'm saying? But it's the word of mouth that's going to cause me, you know, I got to do something. I got to either leave the city or fix it so they can't get in. I mean, it's no different than the auto auction seven miles from us. They have it in Kansas City. Kansas City Auto Auction has the same thing, and like I said, Hooker's Tow has it. We have it in Plankton County and our lot in Plankton County. Lake County tells me if I go across the bridge outside of city limits and buy that thirteen acres, they will let me do it there. I've discussed it with them. So it's either we got to protect what's, what's your guys', it's not ours, but it's our reputation because, I mean, Mac Porter that owns Porter Lumber, he had the wreck up here two or three weeks ago. We had his car ten days. Never said a word about having any guns in it. They got in his car and it calls me and it's like, hey, I had three guns in the trunk of that car. Or in the back of it, but they broke the back window out of it. Probably forty catalytic converters. I mean, I'm not liable if it's your car and I have, you know, so the people get mad at us because we have possession of their car. Insurance-wise, we gated fence, cameras. We protected your car in our eye, or in insurance eye, the best as we can. We're not liable, but it's the word that's, you know, people are talking. I mean, if it was residential. If it was residential, I could understand some different things, you know what I'm saying? But I'm zoned industrial up there.
It's it's inside your, inside your fences where you wanna put.
Picture of it all on my phone and stuff. I mean, so basically, you have your chain link fence or your fence around your perimeter. And this fence bolts inside of your fence. So they have to be able to come through your fence, you know what I'm saying? I mean, you can't. Kids can't get to it or nothing. I mean, you gotta be able to cut the fence. I mean, anybody free, I left the holes there. There's three of them in the back fence. They're coming through the woods. They're staying out of view of the cameras. I mean, Jason, I'll probably tell you, I got probably some of the best cameras that are in town.
The fencing is non-lethal. We're looking at it too. It's it's a non-lethal fence.
Yeah, it's not gonna.
Well, so just reminders, so times I appreciate Mr. Gresham. It's not on the agenda.
I know.
So Alderman, please refrain talking about it, but it is on the, we do have a review of the fence ordinance on the planning and zoning agenda for next Tuesday, correct?
The the issue here is that the fence part is not under the purview of the planning and zoning. So. If that is something that planning and zoning wants to refer to the board, or the board wants to have staff take a look at, that's what we.
I just, I know that anything fencing right now, we do have, the only agenda item we have for fencing right now is for.
Right.
Planning and zoning next week. But after that, if, you know, one of the aldermen wants to put it on the agenda to discuss this, we can. So, but again. Refrain from commenting on it tonight.
Yeah, I would, I would like to move to put it on the agenda in the future to discuss it if it's, if it's outside the purview of the. Of the Plan and Zoning Commission, I like to put it on the on the agenda to discuss future meeting.
Mayor, I just want to call out of order on that. I believe that would be new business.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Alderman Hartman. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Hartman.
Uh, next. And Christine's got two, so we'll go with, this one is the one I got first, K nine dog. Again, you've been here before, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Yes, Christine Bunch, I just moved to Wildflower. So K nine dogs, so last.
Could you say your address, though?
Oh, sorry, one eight six oh eight Primrose Street.
Thank you.
Um, so last April, I reached out to an organization in St. Louis that trains canine. Service dogs and police dogs. And currently, there are five dogs that we do have access to. All chief Lockridge would have to do would be to fill out an application. I did, I do have that available and I can actually send that to you. And there are five dogs right now, and the dog would be no charge. To the city of Smithville. So, and I can help with that with my nonprofit foundation, Kalani Foundation. So. That's a, that's the canine dog. I know there's other costs associated with that, like the car and what have you. But the canine dog would come fully trained with vests and everything that the police department would need. We would just have to find. Somebody like Officer Matthews to have the dog in their care, and I would do free dog washing. So that's for the canine dog. If the city is interested. Secondly, that I had on there, I understand that there are funds being raised for a drone with businesses being broken into. Larger sized businesses, even though it still hurts them, a small business like mine, if something were to happen, would be detrimental. So I have. A hundred dollars to put towards the city for the drone.
Thank you. Uh, next is, uh, Robert.
Yep.
Yep.
Robert Dolshaw, one sixty-one Stonebridge Lane. Hi, this is all new to me, so I. Realize part of it is for the school, our concerns, it's Stonebridge. And part of it is. The zoning, but it's my understanding zoning's been passed already. But the school bus parking lot they're wanting to build. And we're not getting much luck with information from the city and or the school district. I talked with, I went to the superintendent intermittent. Intermittent Superintendent's office, it left my name and phone number three weeks ago. And never got a recall from anybody. Talked to the church, gave them the same information, didn't hear anything from them. When I came down to City Hall. It was. Zoning had been passed. It went from agriculture to business is what I was told by Jack Hendricks. And then now the school's telling me, no, it was. A zone business in the beginning. So I, there I don't understand why. Zoning would have been changed if it was business in the first place. But it's also my understanding that this is gonna try to be on the bond issue in April. Is that, is that correct?
That's what the school district indicated tonight at the joint meeting. That's that's.
Along with other items that. Okay, well, that's what I'm saying. I'm trying to figure out here what, what, who's responsible for what.
Yeah, we don't, and for school district buildings, we don't issue building permits either. They're on there, we don't do their inspections.
So, okay, one of my questions to the school was. The holding pond that they built up here by the new, the stadium, football stadium. That's not part of the city's responsibility to inspect that?
No.
So they're a sovereign nation? Is that what, is that what you're telling me?
They're they're exempt from our city inspections because school district has their own inspectors for that type of work.
And that's not uncommon.
Well, we have.
It's school districts.
We have an issue with flooding over there. And when they put that retention pond in. For the. They put it in, they put the overflow pipe up, I don't know, two or three feet above where it's at now. One of your city inspectors was at the summer, and we talked about it, and he said, well, I don't know. How that passed inspection. Or would have got a permit for that. So.
And I just looked, I pulled up the agenda for planning and zoning, and they changed it from commercial, one one oh three South Commercial. Went from B two to B three, which was still.
It's still business, it's a different classification.
Different classification that they have to have for the school.
So in other words, what I'm hearing you say is. City has no. We can't come to city for any help as far as this parking lot going in.
We haven't seen a plan, a site plan. We haven't, they haven't passed a bond issuance to build it. They have. They're very early on and they're planning too, if you watch their meetings, so.
Right, I understand.
They bought the land, just like we bought the land for intention to do a police department. Four years ago, so we still haven't built the police department or been able to. To go, we haven't gone out to the voters for it either. So, yeah, I don't know what they're, they haven't brought us any. The meeting tonight was, yeah.
Robert told me tonight that it's as soon as the bond money was passed, they were going to start it. But you're telling me that you guys don't issue a permit?
We don't do inspections on that. We, if anything came to us, we'd let you, we would post it and let you know.
Building permit?
We don't do.
You don't do?
We don't do inspections for them, no.
So in other words, there's nothing.
When they did Eagle Heights, they did Eagle Heights. They, that was, that's their thing, so. But yeah.
Well, I can tell you.
And your time's up for public comment, so we can move on, but Cynthia and I can hang out afterwards if you like. To talk about a little more.
And I would, mayor, if I could, just as a reminder, also, I know there was stormwater brought up.
Yeah.
And I don't have the planning calendar in front of me. I do believe, is it the next meeting we have the open house, or is it? Gina, is December sixth, we have a public meeting beginning our stormwater planning process. We do know that there are issues in that area related to stormwater, but we would encourage you to attend that open house.
December sixth, in here, right?
Yes, that's correct. Five o'clock, five thirty.
Oh, Senior Center?
Center, I'm sorry.
Senior Center. Next door.
At the Senior Center next door at five o'clock.
We don't.
It'll be, I don't believe we've included, yeah, but yeah, it's, it, there will be information coming out on that, though.
If you go under our, when you look at our agendas, there's a link that's this planning calendar. Let me look at it real quick. And if you click on, it's usually under the packet. And if you click on the planning calendar, it has tentative dates. We try to put that out there for the whole year. We can't guarantee that's gonna be the exact date. The agenda is posted usually the Thursday before the Tuesday meeting. We have to post it twenty-four hours, but. We try to get it out there Thursday to give people more time to read it. So you can also, if you go under the, if you're on there and you hit sign up for e-notifications, it's right. At the top, it'll automatically send it to you and it's out there too. Okay. Yeah, if you hit under regular session, if you hit more and scroll down to the bottom, it says planning calendar, and that'll give you the, the.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's on, yeah, it shows it five thirty, stormwater open house, December sixth, on the one we posted Thursday. Yep. Stormwater is important. But as Alderman Hartman and I were discussing earlier, the creeks were dry and his cows were thirsty earlier. Should we have any rain? So, moving on to new business. Alderman Russell.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to add to the future agenda, the discussion of electric fencing for industrial purposes, please.
Mayor, also to. Back off of Alderman Russell, my understanding is that. There was some, a break in at one of our businesses as well this weekend at last catalytic converters. So I think it is something that. We want to look at as a board.
Any other new business?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose that out of the agenda, the feasibility of K nine dogs with the. Smithville Police Department, please.
Okay, any other new business? Alderman Chevalier.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, I was talking with Ronnie today about our, you know, meet and greets that we have with the public. That we did, we felt it was very beneficial, and we did help some people that that came in, some good questions, and we would like to champion all of you to. Do similar activities.
Okay.
Thank you, Alderman Chevalier. I was wondering how that's going, so thank you for that challenge, and I believe we can, we can do that. Alderman Shipley and I can talk about timing of that, so.
Thank you. Any other new business? Undertaking motion to adjourn. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, a second.
All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Stand adjourned.